I'd like to call the September meeting of the Planning Board to order, please. Welcome, everybody. Thank you for your attendance here tonight. And I'd ask Tab if she would call the role.
Hey, Barefoot.
Here.
Brad Guth.
Here.
RJ Hemby.
Yeah.
Anthony Heron.
Yeah.
Ricky Hines.
Here.
Matt Nobles.
Here.
Johnny Penner.
Here.
Maria Rogerson.
Here.
Kenneth Ross.
Danny Smith.
Here.
And Mr. Chairman, Clay Malloy Jr. called, and he will not be in attendance.
Okay, thank you. And I've been asked by Ms. Tab to remind everybody, please, speaking to the mic, so that everybody can be heard. We'll be standing here in a second, asking Anthony Heron if he'd lead us in prayer, and Brad Guth will be following with the Pledge of Allegiance. Stand up, please.
Let us bow our heads. Thank you, Heavenly Father, for keeping us here in the east and north Carolina. Thank you for all things great and small. And allow us, Father God, here, to plan and zonin' commission, Father God, to make the right decisions tonight. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you, Anthony. Thank you, Brad.
You're welcome.
Next on the agenda is the approval of last month's meetings. I hope you had time to review those, and I would entertain a motion if everybody has.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept in minutes.
Okay. A motion's been made by Ricky Hines to accept.
I second.
Second by Anthony Heron. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Okay, I guess Eric, we're on tap now with the Southwest Bypass.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's not am. Pleased to give you an update on the progress of the Southwest Bypass Corridor land use plan. The plan, just to give you a brief overview, is a cooperative effort between the county, City of Greenville, towns of Winterville and Aiden, as well as Greenville Urban Area MPO and NC DOT. The Southwest Bypass Corridor has been the county's highest transportation priority in the North Carolina Transportation Improvement Program for several years. Construction is well underway. It began back in September of last year. And the newest expected completion date is mid-year 2020, so June 2020. So, the original was sort of mid-2019, so it has been pushed back several months for that. Just to kind of orient you again with the Southwest Bypass, it's about a twelve-and-a-half mile freeway that's proposed to start at the existing US-264 highway where it intersects with the overpasses you're coming into Greenville. It'll extend down west of Winterville and into Aiden, just south of Aiden's jurisdiction. There are five interchanges that are proposed. First, you see on your screen, will be in the City of Greenville's jurisdiction. That is where it is interconnecting with the 264, with the current 264 interchange. There'll be some interchange improvements or some grade improvements along Stansburg Road where there'll be an overpass. Then, two interchanges at 13, Highway 13 and Dickinson Avenue, and also Four Lines Road. And then, two more interchanges in Aiden at NC-102, and then where it comes in on NC-11 South. We did send out requests for proposals in July, seeking a consulting firm to assist us with developing the plan. I were pleased to announce that we did select Stewart, Inc. as the consultant. We went through a pretty detailed evaluation process to select them. The planning process is expected to begin in October, so just next month, and will last approximately ten to twelve months. The initial steps of the process, first, we're going to be looking to identify key stakeholders in the corridor area. Stewart's going to help us to identify a true study area. So, we'll identify those stakeholders, major landowners, business owners, any kind of public agencies that have interests within that study area, and get their input. Stewart will be conducting interviews with many of these folks. Then, we'll be looking to formulate a steering committee. And this is where, Mr. Chairman, we'll be looking for some assistance with a Planning Board member as well, to help guide development of the plan. There'll be two groups associated with this steering committee. The first is a technical or staff group, and this will be composed of staff members from the county, from Aiden, from Winterville, Greenville, as well as NC DOT. And these will be the technical folks. These will be, they'll be looking at more of the details of the document. And they're proposing to hold about six meetings throughout that ten-to-twelve-month period. The second group will be a study oversight group. And what that is, is that's sort of a more overarching group, composed primarily of Planning Board members from the county and the municipalities that are involved, as well as probably some representatives from some other agencies. They'll meet, they won't meet with the full six meetings with the steering committee, but maybe three to four meetings. Our schedule so far, again, from October to December, we're going to be working on doing some pre-planning. Stewart's going to be working on getting all the documents, all the development regulations from the towns, from the county, analyzing those documents and preparing a report on sort of the existing conditions that are present. Beginning in January through early spring, beginning to develop the plan. And by April, hoping to have a draft plan with hopeful adoption in July of next year. Also, we're looking at two community meetings tentatively scheduled for around February and June. And so, tonight, we do have one recommendation, and again, that is to designate a Planning Board member to help serve on the study oversight group as a representative for the county. And again, like I said, this will not be a group that meets every month, or is periodically, or is much as the technical group, but they will meet in conjunction with that technical staff group to help sort of oversee the development, make sure things are heading in the right direction.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman.
On behalf of the board, in a conversation with James, and in keeping with the idea that we probably would be best represented by people that are in that affected area, and I asked Ms. Barefoot if she would be willing to serve, and she said she would. And Ricky Hines said that he would in those, both in the two areas that, you know, are within that corridor. And so, on behalf of the board, I would entertain a motion if you were in agreement with these two people representing you on this oversight committee.
So motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and move by Mr. Hemby. I need a second.
I second.
Second by Mr. Heron. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Barefoot. Thank you, Ricky.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions if anybody has anything they'd like to know about.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, Eric's ready to field anything you might want to ask. Maybe.
Maybe.
Basically, you sent us, whoa, you sent us emails letting us know when y'all planning to meet.
Yes, sir. Well, once we get all the steering committee and the two groups formulated, Stewart will also be helping assist with the facilitation of these meetings and trying to determine where exactly we'll be meeting. And so, yeah, we'll be sure to let everybody know as far as when and where to meet.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Chris, you're on next for Turner Run.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Development Review portion of your agenda tonight is on page fourteen. We have one item, which is the Turner Run preliminary plat. So, this subdivision is located on NC-33 East, east of its intersection with Blackjack-Simpson Road. It's the Grimesland Township. It's actually located within the Village of Simpson's extraterritorial jurisdiction. It has thirty lots and just under forty acres. Okay, so the site is in the yellow, just north of 33 East. The pink represents the corporate limits of Greenville, Simpson, and Grimesland, and the blue represents their jurisdictions. Okay, this is a little zoomed in. Again, the site's in the yellow. I don't have a plat within the PowerPoint presentation tonight, but I would like to say at this time, the roads are publicly dedicated, and that the plan meets our interconnectivity standards, and it provides for a stub road to the undeveloped track to the east, which if you're looking at this slide, it's to the right of the picture, undeveloped land. So, a portion of the site is within the 100-year floodplain. To the very rear of the site, it's adjacent to the Tar River, and just a portion of that is within the floodplain. It's site, site is zoned, single-family residential, which requires a minimum of twenty thousand square feet. Electricity is provided by Greenville Utilities, and water, we provided by Eastern Pines Water Corporation. So, on the conditions requirements, planning, we'd like to ensure the building setback from 33 East is shown for all lots along 33 East. We will require a construction plan. A sedimentation and erosion control plan will be required, and a wetland determination will be required. Some other conditions from planning, we'll need documentation from the Division of Water Quality approving both water discharge into protected riparian buffers and the road crossing the riparian buffer. We'd also like the floodplain boundary shown on future maps and middles. So, conditions requirements from DOT, a cluster mailbox location was not shown on this plan. They'll need to see that on future plans and middles. Proposed water line must be installed five feet or less from the right-of-way, and water valves must be placed outside of pavement areas. Turning lanes will be, must be installed due to high traffic volumes. Details on how these lanes will be worked out will, we worked out between the developer and DOT prior to the middle of the construction plan. Driveway permits will also be required. Greenville Utilities would like a ten-foot electrical easement back of right-of-way on the opposite side of the road as the water line. And these are general comments from NC DOT. They're not actually conditions. The main one of these two is that DOT would prefer to see only one entrance to this subdivision due to close proximity to an existing traffic signal. And based on my conversations with DOT and the project engineer earlier today, they have already revised the plan and will only have one entrance instead of two. So, that's been worked out between the developer and DOT. Next, we'll move on to some site pictures. This is if you're facing north from 33 East. So, we'd be looking at the very back of this property would be the Tar River, and we're facing that direction. This is if you turned right and you're facing east towards Grimesland. The road you see is 33 East. This is if you turn to your left and you're facing west back towards Greenville. Again, the road is 33 East. Adjacent property owners were notified, and we have received no comments. And the Technical Review Committee recommends conditional approval. I can take any questions you have for me at this time. We also have the project engineer here tonight, if you'd like to ask him any questions.
Question, is this near the Speedway, right down the road from the Speedway a little bit?
I don't know if you can see it in this picture, but I think you can see that the sign for the Speedway in the picture that has like the gas prices on it. It's very small down there, but yeah, it's just right down the road from that stoplight.
Are the setbacks on the lots adjacent to 33 based off the hundred-foot, the future hundred-foot right-of-way, or the existing sixty-foot?
It is based off where the property line is now to the right-of-way. So, it's not based on the future.
To the sixty-foot.
And the other thing, you said that they have agreed to cut down on one of the driveways, the entrance going in.
Right.
You don't know which one.
I believe it's the one closer to the stoplight. So, if you're looking at your map, it'd be the one to the left. But I can ask Brian, is that correct? Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
So, did that end up being cul-de-sac, or?
Yeah, it'll be cul-de-sac.
It'll be cul-de-sac.
And could you elaborate on the 100-year floodplain, exactly what that means?
Sure. So, I'll go back to an arrow here. Basically, if you see the very back of this property, it's adjacent to the Tar River. There's a small sliver of that, so they're on 100-year floodplain. So, no development will take place in that area. Is that?
Now, when you talk about a 100-year floodplain, I mean, I mean, what exactly, I know it says 100, but does that actually mean what it says?
So, it's got a 2% probability of flooding. Okay, so that, what that means is it's got a 2% chance of flooding every year. And once we get past that, that's out of my, 1%, sorry, I said that wrong. Once we get past that, that's out of my area of expertise, but that's, that pretty much is what it is, yeah.
Thank you.
I just have one question, and it may be for the engineer, I guess, about the storm drain pipe that's coming out on parcel eight that's outfalling there.
Yes, my Mr. Chairman and board members.
The only question, I mean, I just had a little bit of concern about future issues from that property owner about all that storm drainage, all the storm water coming off the street, draining into that backyard.
Right, so there's, there's, this whole farm, and I'm going to address a little bit of your question about floodplain, kind of in concert with this answer. So, this whole farm starts out at Highway 33, let's just say, elevation 50, thereabouts. As you go back towards the river, that, and I can't point to it, but the little, small squared jut-out that adjoins the Tar River, so if you were to chop that off and make that a square, by the time you get back there, you're still up on a bluff, and then the property falls off fairly drastically, fifteen, twenty feet of relief, down a hill as you go towards the river. That's the portion that's in the floodplain. Most of that property is low ground, not developable. The floodplain is a theoretical elevation that supposedly, once every hundred years, a storm event will occur that'll cause the water to rise to that elevation. So, it's kind of down that hill. The rest of the property is, quote, "high ground," to put it simply. So, what our goal with the storm outlet over there is, is to daylight that storm into grass swell prior to that storm entering the buffer. So, that's what that configuration is. And so, this actually goes back, this property was preliminary platted in 2006, and that plat was approved, never built, obviously, with what happened with the economy. Same logic that was applied back then is trying to let this water go over land prior to entering those buffers. So, it'll end up in a swale and with easement covering that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. There's no, like, to follow up on that, there doesn't appear to be enough easement to cover a swale coming out of that pipe.
Yeah, and it's, the unfortunate part is that the preliminary plat stage is hard until we get those details fully fleshed out. We'll end up picking that up on the construction plan phase, and then that easement will show up on those final plats that create the lots.
Is there an opportunity to actually tie it back into the driveway, and back into the street pipe?
It, well, it's leaving the street going that way.
Right, but is there any way to not outlet there and go back to that 72-inch pipe that's going underneath the road, to tie it back into that? Are you, are you having to get that treatment going out of the pipe?
We've got to daylight it prior, we've got to daylight it prior to that buffer. There's a, there's kind of a balance act between, and I understand completely what you're saying, there's a balance act between trying to navigate the environmental regulations and then the practicality of maintenance with doing that.
Right, because that's the concern ultimately. If you start to get erosion coming out of that storm drain pipe, then who's going to maintain it?
Yeah, what I envision coming out of there is energy dissipation and then probably permanent TRM lining that swale to try to help mitigate and avoid that.
And that was like eight?
Yes, it's kind of hard to see. It's like a little line, it's a storm drain box, and then it says RCP. That's the reinforced concrete pipe that's coming out into the back of the property.
Before leaving, if you would, just identify yourself so that we, you know, can have it.
I apologize. I'm Brian Fagundis, here tonight on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you, Brian. I guess we're open for public comment now. And we have, yeah, Mr. Riggs?
Yes.
Yes, okay. I'll just remind you that we try to hold it to three minutes.
No problem.
Yes, sir.
I'm Stan Riggs. My wife, Ann. We're the property owners that own all the property on the east side of this development. We have seventy-five acre, small farm there. We've bought it back in 1974, maybe '75, something like that. I forget exactly, but we've lived out there since the Floyd flood. We moved in, and Floyd flooded this area, and I, we've been watching it ever since, and we know exactly where that water comes. And it doesn't take a hundred years to get a flood out there. As you probably know, that hundred-year terminology is not good. It's, it happens more frequently than that. Mr. Fagundis, who has designed this, he was in touch with us back in the, ten years ago now, and we've been working closely together. I hope we will be able to continue to work closely together. We feel very strongly about having a working, environmentally sensitive and beautiful development there, and so far, we found our working relationship very good. And Ann and I are here to support the proposal that he has on the table. We would like to stay in a farm forever, but we are realistic and realize that isn't going to happen out there. But we're here to support this development and hope that we can continue working with Mr. Fagundis to make it a beautiful, environmentally sensitive development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riggs. So, any other questions for Chris before I'll entertain a motion? Someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the conditional.
Okay, Matt Nobles will make a motion to approve. Second by Ricky Hines. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. A few informational items in your package tonight, just some updates on a few things, and most of these you've probably already read about in the paper or have heard in the community, but number six, which starts on page eighteen of your agenda package, deals with modification to a conditional use permit for sand mines. Sand mines have been in the forefront of a lot of discussion of late. The commissioners, I think, have had their feel of some of these discussions of late. And in particular, the Hatcher Mine that's on Shepherd Mill Road, there was an agreement after it was reviewed, that they were out of compliance with some buffer requirements. They've been given an additional 120 days to rectify that. They have been working on it, but it's a lot of work to be done to complete those buffer restoration projects. So, we'll be paying yet another visit to them around Christmas time after the 120 days it lapses. The second one is a minor design modification to a project that was proposed down on Highway 43 South. It is a stone works project. This is a conditional district rezoning. As you probably realize, when those are considered, there's a site plan that comes in. It is to be constructed exactly per that site plan. Well, there were some minor modifications to the building design and also to the parking, and that necessitated the commissioner's review. They did approve that at a meeting last month. Also, the draft comprehensive transportation plan, which is something vital to our whole community here, that was also approved by the board. That went back to the Transportation Advisory Committee of the Metropolitan Planning Organization, and they in turn have reviewed and approved it. So, that pretty much shows like a 30-year horizon for any major transportation improvements for our community. The next one up, and I, if you would, I'm going to spend a little bit of time on this. This is on page twenty-five of your agenda. It's the Unified Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. The county was notified of possible available funds through this program. And in turn, we had built a resiliency plan. Mr. Hemby, of course, was involved with that. We had several meetings around the community, and several things were highlighted through that planning process, as well as through our hazard mitigation plan that was developed for a five-county area. The particular requests that we put into the state, and this will all be forwarded to FEMA for consideration for approval and funding, the first were two stream gauges, one on the Tar River. Most of you realize we depend on the river gauges. The one upstream from us is all the way in Tarboro in Edgcombe County, and we don't have another one until you reach the town common. That's a pretty good span of the river, and you've got to do a lot of interpolation as far as what the flood event may be between here and Tarboro. So, all said, we're asking for an additional one at the NC-222 Tar River Bridge, which is pretty much half the distance between here and Tarboro. Also, looking at one on Contignia Creek down near Griffin. The other one, hard to believe, many of you were involved with our 2015 Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan, but it takes at least a good couple of years to update that plan. So, in turn, we're going ahead and requesting funding for our next round. Of course, the current plan would only run through June of 2020. We need to get funding in, and more than likely, we won't receive any of this funding until 2018 if we're successful. You can see the amount we're asking for in here. The last one is one that we've been discussing a lot about, is an emergency shelter. And exactly through the process that we go through each time we have a hurricane event or some other major disaster, we have emergency shelters typically that are open where they found they're on school sites. In turn, if people are being housed there for an extended period of time, it gets in the way of students returning back to school, delaying school, which is never a good thing. So, what we're proposing is an emergency shelter at the Alice F. Keen District Park. It would also double as a gymnasium that could be used throughout the year. Another component we're looking at, including is a safe room. We have mobile home parks near there. We have student housing near there. In the case of tornadic activities, we could get folks there from that area of the county pretty quickly and have them in a safe environment if they couldn't otherwise stay in their own safe place. So, all said, we're looking at federal funding there. I'll be traveling to Washington, DC next week, actually, meeting with our legislators to talk further about this project. We realize that there's a lot of need for FEMA funding right now, but at the same time, we realize this is a big need in our area here. So, we'll be seeking funding for that, and we'll be reporting back to you on that as soon as we hear any word. There's some other information in your package, our monthly reports, a couple of other things. We've been mentioning about the Planners Conference coming here. This is the North Carolina chapter of the American Planning Association. We're co-hosting that along with the City of Greenville. That starts next Tuesday, runs through next Friday. Tab has been after you. If you're interested in attending any of it, we're able to register you and get you there if you want to participate. And we certainly encourage you to come out if you can. The other thing, if you'll mark your calendars for October the fourteenth, I'll just throw out that we are receiving a national award. I'll just, uh, throw out that we are receiving a national award. Can't get into details quite yet, but we want you to save that date, October the fourteenth, it is a Saturday, and we'll be providing more information about that. We'd love to host you out at an event that is going to be for that particular, uh, designation. Also, several of you are up for reappointments to the planning board. The commissioners will be considering those at your next, uh, at their next meeting on Monday. Uh, hopefully, all goes well. And we'll have this full complement of the board back here for your October meeting. Just know, next month is when we also have election of officers, so be prepared for that, and we'll report back about the appointments at the same time. Welcome any questions, Mr. Chairman. That's all we have for tonight.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, you heard him welcoming any questions that you may have for James tonight.
Thank you.
I don't see any questions popping up, James. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your attendance here tonight. We also thank Mr. Coulson, uh, for representing the county commissioners here, as he always is. And we, we again, thank you and appreciate your presence with us. Thank each one of you for giving your time tonight to be here and serving on this board. No further business, and I declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.